If we could rise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. We have minutes of our meeting held on March 7th. Could I have a motion to accept those?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have Cynthia here to do any swearings in swearing in. That's necessary.
Now, Mr. Pike's been small there, but he should join the crowd. If all of us are swearing in, if you would sign. He was sworn in.
All right. You can go join the crowd.
And after we swear you in around the corner where you're going to leave your
Cynthia, just wait one second. There's someone coming off the, just in case. Not that you can't do it more than once.
We'll put the best one better away.
No, she doesn't count. She doesn't count.
Yeah, Kyle. Oh, never mind. John's coming. Never mind. I just was trying to get you a little closer together so you're on the camera. Thank you.
Thank you for all coming this morning. If you would all raise your right hand, I will not say the office that you're elected for. I just say the office. And you can say your name out loud if you wish, but I won't. We do it separately. They'll be all together, okay? Upon taking the oath of office and having this appointment and certification of state oath recorded by the town clerk, you should have the power to perform your duties as an elected town officer. As of March 14th, 2022, do you
Ronald Metrol.
solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a town of Belmont officer, according to the best of your abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations and constitution of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God. Congratulations, everybody. What's over there? Are they on site?
The what?
Yeah. I tend to try to keep this room quiet because they continue the meeting.
I guess we gotta wait for John, though, right?
Yeah. Yeah. He must have already.
Oh, he might have already signed. There we go. We're waiting for John.
Better waited for worst.
Okay, our next order of business is the organization of the board. We need to elect a new chairman, a new vice chair, and the committee assignments, correct?
Yes, the only, the one committee assignment that stays static is John's. I vote well. This is a new term, but normally John has been.
I'll make a motion to Wait, what was that look on your face?
What is that? I was gonna make a, go ahead.
I'm gonna make a motion to nominate Ruth as chairman of the board.
And I'll second that nomination.
I don't get a say?
No.
Okay.
Majority rules.
Okay, all right. Are you sure, John, that you don't want to be chairman?
Absolutely.
All right, okay. All in favor?
Aye. And then I'll make another appointment to make John vice chairman of the board.
All right. You don't want to be vice chairman?
No.
All right, then I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Yep.
Committee assignments?
Yes, so we have budget committee, we have planning board, we have conservation commission, and heritage commission.
And John, you probably want to stay on the planning board?
I do.
Awesome. I just as soon as say on budget unless you want, no?
No, I'll stick on the heritage.
Okay, all right. And then I've also been doing conservation.
Yeah.
Are they gonna continue doing Zoom? You're not sure yet?
I don't know. I would, I know I have encouraged the Land Use Office to continue at least making it an option.
I think it's a good idea.
I think it works really well for those that, you know, as long as they have a quorum present at the meeting, it works well for for those that can't be there. It also works well for people to be able to listen to the meeting, so. But I can't say that for certain.
All right, all right. I think it's, it works nice. I mean, obviously, with other obligations, it's always nice to be able to at least Zoom in. Well, we saw that with the budget committee, right, Ron? We saw that with the budget committee, the Zoom worked. I thought it worked effectively. I mean, you know, obviously, we had canceled some meetings because we didn't have enough people present. But at least it just. Okay, all right. We have our first public hearing in accordance with RSA 31:95-B. And this is to accept a grant in the amount of $50,000 from the Gopher locality equipment matching program for the purposes of purchasing two rescue boats for the Belmont Fire Department. We will open it to the public for any discussion.
I have had some general correspondence back and forth with the chief, just advising him that we would need copies of the purchase and sales and so forth to move forward so that we can be reimbursed from the grant program. But aside from that, we should be in a good place for that, and that should move forward as soon as he's able to proceed.
Okay, all right. No other comments from the public? None? Then we'll close this portion of the public hearing and move on because there's nothing to vote or anything.
You would just want to make a motion to accept the grant, so, and to authorize.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to accept the grant.
We have to accept the monies.
Fifty thousand dollars, as voted by the people at the town meeting.
Okay.
I'll second it.
And if you, I'm sorry, if you would amend that motion to include authorization for the chairman to sign the grant agreements.
So we're ready.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So you can do the next one.
We are a few minutes early for the next one.
So we could go to the MS 232 statement of appropriations.
So we have completed the MS 232. Basically, this reflects the warrant articles that were voted on at town meeting. Our finance director, Catherine, has entered all of the budgets. And we agree, there was a dollar here, a dollar there, but in the end, the bottom line matches. Everything is complete. And so we have that document for your signature. That will go into the Department of Revenue Administration. Just acknowledging that you had, that the town had voted and approved $11,633,897. Obviously, that's exclusive of the two bond articles that were on because those failed. So if you just sign beside your names.
Shall we move on to the police department, new hire?
Chief is here.
He's the guy in the blue suit.
The guy in the blue suit. I saw Steve out of my corner of the eye over there.
The, we have a new kid that we'd like to hire. His name's Brendan Sittka. I talked to you earlier about him in previous meetings. He's uncertified, but he is gonna be a really a world addition to our police department as far as demeanor and everything too. This is the gentleman that at one point was going to approach the priesthood and decided not to. He's in the National Guard. And if we approve him today, I'd like to square him in at nine o'clock tomorrow morning and invite you to the square.
So he's agreed to all the terms and of the training situation and?
Yep, so tomorrow, tomorrow, if he's approved here, he'll sign an contract with us.
Oh, that was gonna be my next question. Okay. All right, so he's signing a contract?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept Mr. Sittka as a police officer in the town of Belmont.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
That swearing in is at the police department?
Yes, it is. And we have a police department. We can do it there.
And it's at 9:00 a.m., right?
9:00 a.m.
And we have, and we have a elevator.
Can't use it yet.
No, but we got it.
It works.
It's working, but we can't use it till it's inspected.
We'll be in business.
All right, good.
We have to wait for the elevator. Yes, absolutely.
We're not gonna do that, though, till after the site work is done.
They have the site work and the paving left, and as soon as that's done, absolutely.
Jean, your meeting is on mute.
You'll be impressed.
Oh, all righty, audio's not on.
Thank you.
God, I'll tell ya. All right. Are we close enough?
Actually, you still have a few more minutes. Why don't we do the conversation with Patrick regarding the
Oh, the flower beds?
The flower bed out in front of town hall.
Town hall?
Right.
On each side of the door?
On each side of the door.
Okay, all right.
The particular one we're looking at, if you face the building, is to the left. The foundation that it sits on has been compromised. The whole flower bed is now leaning towards coming out into the street. It has pulled away from the building about four inches. So we evaluated it, then we had John Rhodes, the mason here in town, come down and evaluate. We both agreed that needs to come down, either to be rebuilt or just taken down. There's a couple of different options I'd like to throw out. One would be just dismantle it and not do anything. Option two is dismantle it, put a new foundation in and rebuild it. That cost us $3,000. There's about 800 bricks there. Brick material cost is 1,500. His labor is 1,500. So it's a $3,000 cost. And then the third option I'd like to throw out there, dismantle it, put a pavement right there and put a bench. They put bench that people could sit outside of town hall. That is a stop for the bus stop. And we have all the residents on Fuller Street that come there with their children and wait for the bus. So a bench would work there.
And just keep the one on the right side for now.
The one on the right. The one on the right side has moved, but it's not in any, it's not in the shape that it needs to be addressed. So we have three options here. We have $3,000 option, the bench option, who are saying $1,000, 1,500.
I would think it, would it make it easier for cleaning? It's not removable without having the?
It really doesn't affect us much at all, at all. We know that it looks very nice when you have a flower bed and all the flowers are blooming. It's kind of a center point in town. It's just that it's very, it'll be expensive, you know, for $3,000 to put it back.
So you've only, you've only talked to one person on doing this? You haven't talked to anybody else?
I just did the initial thing. I mean, we can go back out. I know, I know Joe very well. I know his pricing is, he's probably gonna give it. I would go out and give additional pricing, but I'm gonna say that his pricing is gonna be the best. Just, just on material costs, we priced materials so we could buy materials so there's no markup, was 1,500 dollars. And so he was saying it would take him about a week to do with it, to do it. So his labor was 1,500 dollars for a mason today.
Why don't, why don't, my thought might be, why don't we remove it at this point and see? I guess visualize. I mean, you know, if people are, oh my God, you know, I guess, remove it and see what kind of comments we get, maybe?
You'll definitely get comments.
Yeah.
Of what we could do is remove it and maybe with Christ's help, we could put some pavement down there so it's smooth and water runs away from the building
Right.
until we decide what we want to do.
Yeah.
But a nice iron bench there. We're figuring an eight-foot bench. But people could enjoy, like when there's all the home day and every, and events going on downtown, it'd be a good place for them to gather. And it's, and security-wise, it's good because we have the town hall. So anybody that gathers there, we're gonna be able to, you know.
See, so we don't have to worry about vandalism too.
I'd like to see something there. I'd hate to see it just plain. That's my thought. Like you say, the benches might be the answer. That's the least expensive too.
You could do a bench and do a halfway decent planter, one that you could remove in the winter or something like that, maybe?
And we'll keep the, we'll keep the flower bed on the right side, and we'll make sure that that's a bloom year round. So that will bring out the beauty of the building and everything else, so.
I think you got some good ideas, so I'd.
Ron, you have a comment, please?
Well, I was instrumental in getting that built. Jimmy Cass built that. The reason why those planters are there is because there used to be stairs that went up in there when it was a store. There was a set of stairs on either side, and when we removed them, the foundation on the bottom, some of the rocks still show. And that was a way to cover up that. So, you know, where, how much longer are you gonna be using that building?
Right, well, that was my.
Spend $3,000 on it, and the plant is not gonna tip over.
Okay.
The reason why it pulled away is because of the frost action over the years. You know, the frost, because that's a ground freezing against the existing foundation, pushed that away. What I would do is just point it up and leave it. That's what I would do.
And not to interrupt, but I think you need to see that it has moved quite a bit.
I, I looked at it the other day when I went in. It's like this far apart.
You got, you got three and a half, four inches gap on the top.
Yeah.
And that gap, Ron, has taken, if you look down at the, at the bed itself, you've got an angle that that whole bed is now moving towards the sidewalk.
Right. But I don't think it's gonna tip over within another, we're going through summertime. So the frost action has stopped. I'd point it up, see where we go. If you get moved out of there and we don't need it anymore, but when you tear it down, you're gonna find a mess. I'll tell ya, say. So it's not gonna be pretty when you remove that. That's the reason why we put the planters there, so.
Well, and I think probably at this point, it's smart to wait till the frost comes out, maybe, and see how it settles back down, kind of thing. It's something we want to do right now.
Well, the other, the other thing you could do, because it's tipped out, and it's only, it's only, of course, a brick around there. It's not a, a 12-inch wall. So you dig the material out, push it back, re-point it, and then put the material back in again, so. That's, that's a way to get, get around it because it's just, it's just sitting there. But that's, how many years is that now? Geez, 30, 40 years? That's how long it took to move that. So I don't think it's gonna move. That's my opinion.
All right, all right. And again, I think my thought would be to wait till the frost comes out, too. Give it a chance, maybe to settle back, and we'll look at it some more.
We'll, we'll keep monitoring.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Okay, awesome.
Just like one comment for me.
Okay.
What it's gonna cost to pay it, I mean, it's not gonna be substantial, but it's a few on the box, just.
Sure. Well, and the problem is.
If you're gonna get a bench, you wanna get a bench, something that's gonna match what we have. Those benches, I'm not sure if you've done any pricing there.
Big money?
About $1,000 per bench.
What?
For about $1,000 per bench.
And, and again, if we got, if we got rocks sticking up and stuff underneath that, then you're gonna, yeah.
So realistically, you're not half the cost of the pavement, like a bench, and it's good to fix it and make it like it was. I kinda like it.
I like flowers on both sides of the door. One side of the door and then a bench.
Yeah.
Flowers on both sides.
Let's wait till the frost is out of the ground. Maybe we can, maybe I can cut a little asphalt. See, maybe we can. Maybe we can, maybe we can jack it up or something, or do something, maybe.
I don't think definitely pack a truck and move, push it back.
Get the backhoe down here.
Climates above.
Okay, all right.
The other thing you could do.
What?
I just think, well, it's just like this building, I don't know if you see on the outside, there's rods that hold the building together. But you'd do the same thing there. You could run a rod through the brickwork, put a plate on the outside, put it on the inside. And once you dig it out, you could pull it back together, so it'd stay.
I recommend we have Ron come down and supervise the construction.
I did the first one with your father.
I think that way, that way it'll be done right. We'll have it all, we'll be able to work, we'll be able to work with Ron again.
I did that with your father, you know.
I know you did. And Rod Burrow. Yep. Wicked skinhead.
Okay, now we can do the public hearing. Now we've gone beyond. All right. We have another public hearing in accordance with RSA 31:95-E to accept a donation of six Motorola radios with accessory equipment from the Gary, is it?
Sinis?
Sinis.
Sinis, Sinis Foundation. And the value of this donation is $28,777.45. So Motorola radios for what, cruisers?
Portals.
Oh, portals, okay. Can anyone from the public have, I can ask for opening first, I guess. No public comment? So these are portable radios to be used?
By patrol.
Okay.
They'll go right to the patrol officers, and then those radios will transfer off to the.
So this wasn't a grant, this wasn't a grant?
This is a grant.
It is a grant?
It is a grant. This is a private foundation.
Okay.
And we applied to it.
Oh, all right.
And we were accepted for six radios. Just to give you an idea, so far since '21 to '22, with the grants that we've applied for and we've been approved for, we've currently reached $545,900
Awesome.
in grants.
Really?
In equipment, so we've done, we've done very well. There's a few more that we're working for.
Okay.
I'll be bringing one to you shortly for $20,000 for a LiveScan machine that we've been approved to get, so.
For the what machine?
LiveScan. So in other words, what it is, it's a digital fingerprint machine.
Okay, that, okay.
So we don't have, we won't be doing paper anymore, but when they're, it goes automatically where it needs to be.
Awesome.
We can also get identification from people.
That's huge, because.
Huge. We've been, we've been in the loop for this for several years. And I know it pretty much was because of the building we were in.
The new facility.
Put a $20,000 machine in there. But now we have a good building. We were the first ones to get signed off, and we were at the top of the list.
Awesome.
It just has to be built and shipped, and then I'll bring you the stuff.
Built and shipped. That could be an issue.
Absolutely.
Now, what's that drug grant? What does that?
Drug grants, the drug officer that's going to, it's, it's a grant 100% paid for by the federal government. It comes with, it pays the officer's salary, a cruiser, and a laptop. What that is, is that person's gonna respond to overdoses. Whether they're deaths, whether it's just overdoses in general, they're gonna do community outreach. They are gonna be the liaison between the person that's using a drug illegally to get them treatment, to get them on a road to recovery. So it's kind of a program where we can now better interact with the community on the drug side of things as opposed to just interdicting them with arrest, because that's all we do. I mean, we don't, we just don't have an avenue to offer treatment and counseling and get them hooked up with the organizations that can provide that. This, this drug grant now assigns an officer specifically for this. And as you know from our, our statistics, we have a, we do have a major drug problem. But we have no way to do anything with that other than by arrest. Now we'll have someone that can interact with them, put them into services, work with them through the services, and hopefully, kind of turn them around a ton a little bit. At least the younger population get them away from actually.
So this is just a one-time grant thing?
Three years.
Oh, so three years?
This is a three-year grant, so that person will be in this program for three years. Generally speaking, most federal grants like this will roll over at least once. So you're looking at about a six-year program. So when it rolls over, it'll roll over with different monies because of the increases in salary for that officer and stuff. And the program will just continue, so it pretty much is self-sufficient. You've got an officer card and laptop, that's all they need to operate, and it pays 100%.
Sounds like a good grant to me, I mean.
It's, it's a really, it's a really a good grant. And it's something that the town really needs. It's something I can't, I can't provide. I mean, I'm three, I'm three positions down right now. I can't dedicate anyone to do this. I won't be able to.
Chief, is this similar to Officer Adams in McConaughey that's been doing this for years?
Exactly the same program.
And you guys have read that and heard about that in the paper and?
Yeah. So Adams worked this in McConaughey for many years. The state has now adopted the program, and they apply for federal grants for the Attorney General's office. They, we've been, this is the third year of the application by the AG, and they've finally granted the approval for it. So we're one of, I think, five towns that are actually going to do this program that have been granted this. So it's, it's a home run for Belmont. It really is, as far as being able to reach out and I, I guess, have a different side, the side of law enforcement side, to maybe do something.
Well, I think it's the same thing. You know, we all know, having young people, now it's kind of a next step from, say, the police officer in their uniform. Now you have the next step with trying to help that child or that young person, or whoever it might be, to get the help. And, and obviously, I assume that this person's gonna have connections or know where to call next to move that person onto the next.
They'll be completely involved with any and all programs that are available in New Hampshire, from Portsmouth to.
Yeah.
Wherever there's a program or something that they can help these people get into, it will, it will do that. I mean, you kind of look at the adult population that's involved in the drug issues.
It's not all kids.
It's not, it's not kids.
No.
But your kids are grown up into this. So this person's gonna be able to run programs and try to get that information across and show that it's not a good idea. This is what can happen, and just start, just try to.
So is this person gonna be able to, like, maybe do things in school, like run little programs in the school, in the schools, or whatever?
Yes. Yeah, and the outreach is huge.
Yeah.
They're not uniformed, so you don't have that stigma that it's a police officer. Although they do have, obviously, the powers of arrest and everything.
Sure, they are certified. They would be a certified.
Interdicting the drug traffickers, the people in possession. I have, I have guys that are doing that.
Yeah.
These are taking over after that. Because you've already established that there's a problem with a particular person, now you can attack what the problem is and try to get them into services that maybe they didn't know of, or maybe they didn't want to, but maybe now with a little conversation, it might get them in, and who knows?
And obviously, some of these programs, and maybe Donna can help, you don't have to have money. It's, it's funded through other sources, so.
I'm excited for it, to be honest with you. I think it'll make a huge, huge impact on the community.
Well, three years ago, we applied for this.
Yeah.
It was needed then.
Sure.
So you can only imagine three years later, how bad it's gotten. I mean, I'm not sure if it was last year or the year before, we seized about 50 cars for search warrants. I mean, that's a lot, a lot of people transporting drugs around. And I don't know what we're up to this year already, but we've seized quite a few cars already. So I mean, the problem's there.
So this person is only gonna deal with Belmont people, or if there's a person in town but not a Belmont person?
It'll be issues that occur in town. The person doesn't necessarily have to be a resident of Belmont. The issue happens in town. The interaction will happen.
Okay. Awesome.
And she'll be working with the other, the other people that are out there, the other agencies. So if it is someone from another town.
From a different town.
They can still do the referrals and get them involved.
Sure, sure, sure.
The public hearing for that grant is scheduled for April 4th, so that we can get the necessary paperwork into the governor and council for sign. get the necessary paperwork into the governor and council for signature. We included the, in our discussions regarding the potential leases for the police department for cruisers this year, we included that cruiser in the discussion, and I have those numbers for you for today's meeting as well.
All right, okay, I don't think we took a motion on, on the.
You have not yet, because you haven't finished.
We got a little off course, all right. Any other questions?
I, I did wanna note on this particular grant that what will happen is, the grant, the grantor will pay directly to the vendor for this equipment. The monies will not come through the town, that's why it's listed as a thirty-one ninety-five E instead of B, so we're not physically accepting cash, we're actually accepting truly the donation of the equipment.
Oh, so there's no money exchanged, we're just receiving equipment?
The donation is directly a Motorola.
Correct. All right, so we receive the radios and we don't?
Correct.
Correct. Got it, all right. Um, can, any other comments? Okay, could I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the radios under this Motorola, this grant, which is under RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash E, and accept the donation of six Motorola radios with accept accessory equipment from the Gary Sinis Foundation. The value of this donation is twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-five cents.
Now, second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mark.
Nice job.
Okay, I've kind of lost track here, we've skipped all around.
So the next item would be, just talking about the Parks and Recreation budget. The, the members of the committee had submitted a budget to us just prior to town meeting, which basically represented the hundred and fifty thousand that they were anticipating would pass through the town meeting process. One of the line items that was not included in the breakdown of the budget was funding for lifeguards. So I did put in, I did move some of the monies from their proposed budget into the lifeguard line, so that they would be funding for that program. Were they to actually be able to get a camp program up and running, and they had planned to use the beach, they were going to need lifeguards. So they, they've received a copy of it, they're fully aware of what, what we did.
Is there a list of these committee members?
Yes, I do have a list of the three, there's actually only three committee members at this point, and that would be Ricky Cormier. Ricky Cormier, Lisa Ober, and Nikki Sturgeon are the, the three members of the committee that Ricky had forwarded to us. We've put together, they had submitted information regarding a potential job posting, Alicia and I went through it and made some changes, made sure it referenced the fact that we needed to be a completely encompassing program, and that they would need to oversee the beach, et cetera. At least that information is all in the job description. So the posting has gone out, and they had recommended twenty-four dollars an hour for a thirty-two hour work week in order to meet our grade and step scale. The hourly rate turned out to be twenty-three dollars and fifty-two cents, which is a grade fifteen, step one. Alicia and I are finalizing the job description now to make sure that it includes everything that you had been in the prior Parks and Recreation.
And that's no benefits?
And that's no benefits, sorry, yep.
That's as per the paper on Saturday.
Correct, yep. Yes, it's part-time right now, with, obviously, they would like to see it be full-time in the future, but there would not have been sufficient funding to cover all of the various components of full-time employment, at least in year one, based on the information that we had, so.
I have a question regarding this budget.
Mm-hmm.
Looking at, when we talked to the lighting company about changing the lights on the main street, going to a new style illumination system, were these lights under the parking electric, were those lights being changed also?
No, those are not included because they're not part of our streetlight program that we pay to Eversource.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question? As far as committees are concerned, who appoints committee members? How does that work? I know this group kind of got together and obviously brought some board, but is, wasn't it always the board who actually kind of appoints the committees and?
So at this point, they're what I would call an ad hoc committee. They are not a formal, yeah, they are not a formal committee, formally appointed by the board with any duties and powers. They are basically a group that had gotten together, put together a warrant article proposing to amend the budget to bring the Parks and Recreation program back. I think the intent would be for them to work closely with a new Parks and Rec director, but obviously, they wouldn't have any authority to direct that individual or direct the programs, they would just be able to provide and offer ideas, I would assume, volunteer, et cetera. If the board wishes to formalize them and give them some type of duties and powers over, whether it be the individual, whether it be the budget and so forth, you certainly could do that. They're a small group right now.
Not at this time, I don't.
I, I think it's best that you retain it in the manner that you have it currently, which is under the Board of Selectmen and the town administration, with this group's absolute one hundred percent input into, you know, what they would like to see. Obviously, they all have young children, and, and it would be, you know, beneficial to have their ideas as part of that process.
Again, I think it boils down to the fact, the person that we hire may have a whole different set of ideas that they'll have to all work out, I would think, I mean, that's kind of, I mean, I don't know.
I was just trying to get clarification on whether it was, as Jean said.
Yep.
And also, let's not forget Sinis.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
You know, this is huge, I mean, there's so much emphasis on, you know, younger people, but.
I wonder if, and this is only as a thought, we don't know that there's any funds out there to resurrect a senior, what was it before?
Well, it was actually the Belnap, Belnap Merrimack County Senior Citizens Group CAP, the Community Action Program, that actually funded and ran this program.
Right.
They were the ones that pulled funding.
Pulled out, okay.
I certainly, they, we've not been approached by them to.
Resurrected, so to speak.
Resurrect that program. There's a group of our elderly residents, or senior citizens, I should say, not elderly, that are currently using the second floor, and they're still actively meeting on Tuesday and Thursdays.
They are.
I mean, we get notification from Patrick every now and then that they're not coming in, Susan Roche has been kind of the, the.
Leader?
Leader of the group.
And she posts on Facebook if they're not gonna meet or whatever.
Yeah, and they're open to, to anyone, you know, from the Belmont community that wishes to participate. You know, yes, the town is, is covering the cost of the lights and the heat in the building, but aside from that, they bring their own, you know, if they're having anything to eat, any of that, they're bringing all of that in, and they seem to be content with the situation.
The average attendance is between four, six, and seven per week, depending on the day and the weather, what's going on.
Of course, yeah, I know they do different things, so.
Yeah.
And she's been very good about posting it, so that people know what's going on.
She's been very good about keeping Patrick informed, she has Patrick on speed dial.
All right, good, all right. We have Conservation Commission appointments.
Yes, so Denise Navia has submitted a request to be reappointed to the Conservation Commission. Her current term expires at the end of this month, March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and she would like to be twenty-twenty-two, excuse me. This new appointment would run through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to accept this for Denise Navia, and it's to run from three thirty-one to twenty-twenty-five.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that the only one?
Yes, that's the only one of that.
And what do we have for other new businesses?
So under other new business, you have an application under RSA seventy-two colon eighty-one from Ed Crawford with Winesquon Marine regarding tax map two twenty-four, lot fourteen, which is a vacant parcel of land, which he intends to begin construction on, which will be another boat storage facility. It's currently going through the planning board process. I actually think it's, it's completed all of its work that it's had to do with them, so he is at the point where he is filing his building permit applications, and this program is under the, the new construction exemption, which allows, currently it allows fifty percent of the value of that new construction, it does not apply to the land, and it runs for a period of five years. This is a program that we only have one currently, one taxpayer currently that is participating in the program, which is AE Mitchell, which is property located up at the top of Prescott Hill. We do have several applicants, though, that are going to be coming in under the new exemption that we just approved. The criteria under the new exemption, or the new language is slightly different, it has to show that it is adding taxable value, well, certainly, Mr. Crawford is adding taxable value, there's the potential for, you know, new employees in some of these other locations, and there has to be a benefit, I mean, and there's, there clearly is, by, you know, improving and adding commercial construction and value to the community is, is, is huge.
That's why we proposed it.
Correct. So what we're looking, what I'm looking for is the board's approval of his application. It would not apply to any assessment this year because the new construction won't be assessed until April of twenty-three, so at that point, he would receive a reduction of fifty percent off the value of the new construction of the, any buildings on that lot.
And they have to submit this before any construction starts?
They have to submit before construction starts, that's why you have this now, and in conjunction with his building permit applic, application, correct, yep.
And for the record, we'll probably get some pushback on this, because the man who built the vault and his engineering staff or his planners did not apply, because this exemption was there, available to him, but they did not apply prior to the building being built.
The old building.
The old building, correct, correct.
He's, he's in a new process for a new building, which I'm sure he'll come forth.
Yeah.
Because he came to us, if you recall, he came back and asked after the fact, what about this? Well, he didn't do it, as Mr. Crawford has stepped up prior to the building being built in the approval section. I'll make a motion to accept this.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
If you sign the application form, that would be wonderful, your signatures are.
Minds are there.
Any other new business?
Yes. So as you know, I am currently the board representative to the One of Psaki River Basin Project, which is our participation with the sewer plant down in Franklin, and I'm requesting that the board authorize me to move those appointments, so that Alicia is the town's board representative. I'll remain on as board alternate until June first, and then I would come off of that committee. We would both have voting rights, at least through that June first deadline, but that way there she'll be all set to go, you know, on my retirement. So I'm just looking for a motion to authorize me to sign that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all, it's all, I just had to have approval to, to sign it.
Okay, all right, so.
Second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And you have a request from the finance office to authorize or to delegate deposit authority to the town treasurer. She may then delegate the deposit or financial function to other town officials or employees if necessary. This is a form that's signed annually by the treasurer and the Board of Selectmen. I don't know if you had an opportunity to read the newspaper the other day, but the governor had recently spoke at a public event last week, towards the end of last week, regarding the possibility of suspending the rooms and meals distribution for this coming summer. That would be the meals and rooms tax that is currently charged for lodging and restaurants, et cetera. And we received an email on Thursday morning from the Municipal Association raising some concerns about this, because obviously, communities, cities, towns across the state receive a significant amount of money from that distribution of rooms and meals tax. The town of Belmont received in excess of five hundred thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-one from that program. So suspension of it without a guarantee from the state of New Hampshire that they're going to make up that loss in funding through opera funds or whatever, I think is of a serious concern to us as a, as a community. I understand the want and the need to, you know, bolster the, the local businesses and, you know, increase their revenues and those visitors coming into the state, but on the other side, if we don't receive those revenues as a reimbursement from, or as a, monies from the state, you know, that increases the town's tax rate. So I think it's important that we, you know, should we see or hear more about that, that we would want to.
To respond?
To respond, that, that we really, you know, it's a great idea, it's a great idea, but, you know, as long as the state's gonna, to compensate us for that funding, because otherwise, you know, then it's not a great idea.
Right, and how's the state, and how is the state gonna comp, compensate us?
Well, I would, you know, I mean, they've been, you know, they've been developing a number of these different programs where they are, you know, setting aside grant monies for this and that, and I would think that they could, you know, do a similar thing, saying that they'll make up whatever the difference is in the loss of funding by suspending that.
But again, there's no guarantee.
No.
The grant monies are where the squeaky wheel gets the grease. The bigger the town, the more the money.
Yeah.
You can't trust the state, but we did on, on retirement for the police and fire. Now, they used to give thirty-five percent, then they went to twenty-five percent, now they don't give it, so the probably taxpayer ends up carrying the whole load.
That's right.
I mean, they're talking about a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars in the Roman bills, you know.
Actually, it's, this last year, we got five hundred, and was actually five hundred and change, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
But wasn't that a, wasn't?
No, it's, if they, when, when asked, I've budgeted the same for anticipated revenue next year.
Yeah.
So. They're not gonna make that up.
No, no, because we're only one little town.
Exactly, right.
Yep, all right. Any other new business?
No.
All right, on to all business. New Hampshire DES funding letter?
Yes, so as you know, the.
There you go.
The warrant article failed at town meeting relative to the iron and manganese treatment facility. It did not receive the required three-fifths vote. So we have been advised by the Drinking Water and Groundwater Bureau that we need to send a letter declining the financial assistance in the amount of six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars, which was offered to us through their DES appropriation of American Rescue Plan Act twenty-twenty-one funds. I did have an opportunity to speak with Rick Skarenka, who works for DES regarding upcoming funding and upcoming programs that we would want to continue to apply for. Even though this warrant article failed, which gave us the authorization to bond the facility or bond whatever we didn't receive in grant or, you know, other funds, he did recommend that we go forward, because there will be additional grants coming out that we can apply for in the, in the twenty-twenty-two round, again, going back to town meeting in twenty-twenty-three, for that final authority to move forward, but that we really would want to do that. In addition, we discussed getting the preliminary engineering done on the program, on the, the facility, so that we are, if you recall back many years ago, there used to be that saying, shovel ready, so that we are in a better place. Should there, should there be an opportunity for a hundred percent grant funding, we would want to have our plans in place to actually construct that facility, were we able to get that, so.
But even if we have a hundred percent grant funding, it still has to go through.
No, it does not.
It does not.
It does not, it would come to the Board of Selectmen, who have the authority to accept those grant funds, so if we were able to get.
A hundred percent.
A hundred percent from several different entities.
Yeah.
Then we would have the ability to.
Now, DES is funding through the federal, or as he talked. Now, D E S is funding through the federal, or is he talking both state and federal?
There's going to be a combination. There are, there is federal money coming down under the program. It's, it's called the B I L, which is one of the, the federal programs that is supposed to be coming along. The emergent contaminant program, which manganese is going to be considered an emerging, an emergent contamination factor, whatever. There'll be monies available through that. The drinking water trust fund, he recommended we apply again, even though we've lost funding twice now or turned back funding twice from them. He did strongly recommend that we, we go forward with, with that.
And obviously, the infrastructure bill does include water.
Mm-hmm. There is, you know, there is going to be significant funding available. So we have to keep up our, our efforts to apply for it. I know, you know, there's
Well, we have to keep, we have to keep doing that because the first time we have to send out a notification.
Correct. And that was what he had said. He had said that, you know, the concern is when you start sending out notification because you've, you've exceeded the levels and it says, you know, don't feed the, don't feed the water to your babies, you know, you're gonna hear a significant amount. Now granted, people have been drinking the water for, for years, but unfortunately, you know, the, the federal government, EPA, and now D E S have recognized that it can have a potential health effect. And I think that's, you know, the concern. So I do have the letter prepared for your signature. I did, you know, certainly express that you would hope that you would be bringing it back before the voters again in twenty-twenty-three, and perhaps, you know, we need to hold several meetings, or you need to hold several meetings this summer, just, you know, reminding everyone why it's important. I think that the improvements to well number one are gonna make a big difference and may help in that regard, because it will
Give us a little bit of thought.
Be able to alternate sources. But, so this is actually just for Ruth's money.
Just for her signature only?
Yeah, just her.
And who, where would we be going to for preliminary engineering for this?
We have been working with Underwood on this project, so they have a lot of, of that work already.
Information already.
So they would, but they have not given me an estimate of cost yet, which I will bring to you before they get started. I've asked them for a preliminary estimate on the cost. We have been, town's operating budget passed, so we began actively seeking actual, we, we went out and got four different lease proposals for leasing the three cruisers for the police department and for the LED lighting project, because we were going to be adding that into the program. And I'm happy to say that Franklin Savings Bank came in with a two-point-one interest rate, one of the best leasing rates I was able to get. And I am recommending to the board that we move forward to, to keep those leases local. The interest rate was, was lower than, than any I saw. And even though we have been using Bancorp for a number of years for our leasing programs, their interest rate came in very close to M L, M L C Municipal Leasing Consultants at about three percent. So Franklin Savings Bank's proposal was excellent. Tax-exempt leasing corporation, which was the other one I reached out to, was three-point-four-nine, three-year term, John. Annual payment would be about forty-seven thousand for the three cruisers, and the LED program about sixty-seven hundred for three years for the lighting program. So I was really pleased. I worked with Ken Sawyer at the bank. I had actually gotten his lead from the town of Guilford, who just recently went into a leasing program with them. So we, I'd like to proceed with it.
Very good. Good work.
I think it was a, a great program. Evan, Lieutenant Belanger, and I are working on the process for that third cruiser, which is part of the grant, to make sure that we don't obligate those funds until the grant agreement has been signed and so forth by governor and council. So we're working closely to make sure that that happens. So I think we're, we're, I'm excited. I think this is great to have it local. I, I just think it's, it's great. We also have potentially, and I haven't reached out to Ken yet, but we also have the highway department has the new truck that's coming in. We had gotten originally a proposal from Bancorp, but as soon as Craig's able to give me a, a firm number, I will reach back out to Ken and see about potentially using Franklin for that as well, because I think that, I think it's great to keep it local.
Yeah, I think, I much prefer.
You know what I know, and I don't want to, um, it's just
I know, it's
It's, it's crazy.
What about our general banking?
Uh, we currently use Northway.
Yeah, Bang North?
Uh, Northway.
Northway.
Northway Bank. Yeah. We've been using them. We have an excellent
What about looking at Franklin Savings Bank?
Well, we had done that a few years back, and one of the things that Northway has been exceptional with, and I know Catherine's online, she may be able to chime in, there's no fees associated with Northway, which has always been the problem when we have reached out to other banks, is there are, there are fees associated with sweeping funds, you know, back and forth, allowing the online access, you know, that, that whole program.
I may be mistaken in this, but I believe you'll find that Franklin Savings Bank will pick up your deposits, which is a huge issue in my mind in this town. Because our town clerk, tax clerk, takes the deposits over there in lieu of any kind of police protection.
Mm-hmm.
And that, to me, a lot of us can't.
Well, and that was gonna be my next thing. The only problem is it's that much farther to go to Franklin.
They're right, they're behind the diner in Tilton.
Oh, I think, okay.
So actually, a little closer.
I forgot about that. That's exactly right. I forgot about that.
It's amazing what you can do.
Exactly right. I don't pay attention to that.
Certainly something we can confer with Alicia, uh, Alicia and Catherine on.
I don't know about that, but I, but I understood that that was a service that they might provide.
And I know that we had reached out to Northway to get them to provide that service as well. Obviously, they were, they were not able to, to do so. We would want to, you know, confirm that Franklin was able to do so.
Absolutely. I'm not saying to do this. I just look it up.
Right. But we would also need to know what their, what the associated fees were.
I, I understand that. But if we don't ask, we don't
Yeah. No, absolutely. So we can certainly have, you know, Catherine take a look at that and see what, what's out there. The other thing that we have going on right now is the Friends of Aaron Roberts Skateboard Park. We had asked them at your meeting last week to, if they had a, someone who was in the surveying world, to go out and take a look at the parcel next to the fire station. I haven't heard back from them on that. But in the meantime, there's been correspondence going back and forth between myself and the New Hampshire Parks and Recreation Office Representative, Eric Feldman, Felbaum, and National Park Service Regarding Land Water Conservation Grants. And he had indicated that the next round of funding is coming right up. Amanda Osmer, who was present at that meeting that night, had also, you know, reached out to him because she had asked for his contact information. He has gotten back to us and recommends that if the town were interested in running a program for that grant, they would want to put in a pre-application right away, because the town would have to be the applicant, complete the grant application and so forth. The, the issue becomes, or my question to you, is if we are going to consider going forward with the fire department parcel, it is my, I would understand that you would most likely not want to encumber that piece into perpetuity because of its proximity to the fire station and any future needs you may have as a community on that parcel. We would not be able to encumber the parcel that's owned by the state, which is located, you know, adjacent to Main Street, because it's not ours. They have, they are going back to their people to potentially get us authorization to put that walkway in that I had suggested. So that may still happen. But again, it would still be on state-owned property. So the only other alternative was to apply for the grant to build the skatepark in Sergeant Park using Land Water Conservation Fund monies, which really did receive some opposition the other night at the meeting. So my question is, do you wish to submit a pre-application? He indicates that if we do submit an application of the intent to apply, that should we decide not to apply, we can pull it?
I, my whole thing with the skateboard park and rebuilding the rec department, or re-rectifying, I guess you'd call it, that should come under one heading. We don't need forty-seven departments to do one common cause. So I think while we're establishing this rec department, which we've shown they voted in the money, we obviously placed the ad already in the paper for a director, that this skatepark would be part of the rec department in their overall being and their overall budgetary of, this takes care of it. There's one department. So whereas we don't have a director right now, I, I think we're going, we're running before we started to walk. And if you think we should put the application in, and in your judgment, I would probably go along with it. But I still think that this rec department should take care of these entities. It's like, we have a police department that takes care of the police, we have a fire department, we have a public works department.
I
And the rec department should take care of both the recreation facilities, which is, I think the skatepark falls under that.
And I think that they would. I think the intent would be that they would oversee it once it was constructed. But I think that the two right now are still two separate projects. You've got the Friends of Aaron Roberts, who really are the ones going forward with raising money to build the skatepark. Had the funding not passed at town meeting, you still would have had the Friends of Aaron Roberts going forward to build a, a skatepark. So I wholeheartedly agree that once a new director is hired, they should be part of the process of, of overseeing and maintenance.
It still could be called the Aaron Roberts Skatepark. I don't have, the, the name and construction of that, to me, is secondary. We're all in the town of Belmont. The, the name of it, to me, it means a lot to those people, and I think that name should stay with it. But the management and the forthcoming of it should be under one heading and then looked at it as one budget item. And it may have different arms. I mean, Craig has trucks, he has loaders, he has cruisers, he has uniforms, he has, same with the fire department.
Right. But I, I think the issue is we're not, we're not to the point where we'd be looking to put a budget number in, because we don't want to build it.
That's right.
The town doesn't, right. So, so we, we would include their, part of their function and duties would be to work with this group to, to get it built. But we lose the opportunity to, to apply to the Land Water Conservation Fund if we don't put an intent in now.
So what is this grant for? Is to help to build it?
It was to help build it.
Okay. Now, my other question is, obviously, the chairman, I assume, I don't know if he's still the chairman, but he ran for reelection for the school board. And they knew nothing.
You had
Okay. And it was my understanding that, and I, and I believe, I think, from our last meeting, that that group was going to approach the school board, and he was aware, obviously, of that piece of land that we were told was going to be, could possibly be a change of picking up park, whatever, that that was the first that anyone had heard about it. So I think it would be who of us, I don't know if it should be us, or if it should be the group. I got the impression when they were here that they were going to approach the school board, but don't quote me. So I guess maybe we should be reaching out to the chairman of the school board to see where they are with that.
We, we were point-blank told by the superintendent of schools
That was before, um
That they, they would never give up any land
Right.
For a skateboard park or anything else.
Right.
But the school board never said that.
Right.
The chairman of the school board never heard that, never was brought up at a meeting. So there's some conjecture there that we need to get cleared up.
And, and I would recommend that we reach back out to this Amanda Osmer, who seems to have been the one that's contacting us
Absolutely.
And saying, you know, we understand that the school board is willing to talk to you.
That's exactly right.
So my suggestion is that you reach out to the school to discuss the possibility of another parcel of land.
And made that perfectly clear, that he had no conversation, Mr. Terzi had never had a conversation with the school board concerning any parcels of land, or any forgiveness of land or thereabouts. But Mr. Terzi stood right there, there's right there, and said, "Never. No."
Well, I think it's obviously, you gotta look at all prospects before, I mean, yes, I think
We'll make the application.
I think at this point, I'll put the intent in. I have no idea what number to
We're gonna be part of it, there's no question. But the bottom line is, we've got a, we've got a problem in our, in our own henhouse here. I mean, when the chairman of the school board said, said, yeah, you thought it was a great idea, and I said, well, why didn't you support it? He said, what do you mean? Never heard of it, till you guys mentioned it today.
And, and I think mainly that the most important thing that I want to make sure that everyone is aware of that's listening, that's gonna watch this on TV, is that, you know, if the grant were to go forward, it does, it does encumber whatever that parcel may be. Obviously, the park, Sergeant Park is already encumbered. So you're not really adding to any type of additional restrictions or whatever. But if you were going to allow it to be built, or the school is going to be, allow it to be built and use grant funds, they're encumbering those parcels.
And I think the other thing that is so, we start the night of this meeting. If you ask any questions that someone takes that might be a little bit questioning, we're already not supportive of it. All right? And that was huge. You, you would see that.
And I don't, I, I certainly think
We've gotta make sure that we just cover all of our bases.
I think that you've been, you know, I think you were very open and supportive to agree to, you know, and again, I reached right out to, right away, right away, and so.
When you say that, Jean, you were saying, so was that the fire department, they didn't encumber the property?
Not the entire parcel. We would, what they do is they would do what they call a subdivision on paper, so to speak, and they would subdivide off that parcel of vacant land that's to the, if you're looking at your building, to the right of your building, that piece would be encumbered in perpetuity for the purposes of recreation.
And as you mind, the board, the fire, the police department had a fire pit at the stadium for years. We were unable to do a lot with it because of that.
Right.
So if you do something like this, and then we need to do something in the future, that could hinder that.
Right.
Just be aware of that.
You'd have to exchange whatever that parcel of land, the size of that parcel of land, for another piece in the community that could meet that need. Correct.
And, and Mark ran into that big time.
Oh, yeah, we did.
Big time.
Sorry, Ron. Ron?
Oh, God.
Skatepats.
We haven't had a good history with them. We spent a lot of money on the last skatepark. We bought concrete items for them to skate on and everything. But it was in a residential area, and we were getting kids in from other towns that were using the skatepark. And then the language and everything else, the neighbors started to complain about it. So, and I know, like Laconia, they had their skatepark by the police station, and then he ended up moving it up to Opichi Park, but they've had problems up there. I, I don't know if it's because of the, the type of kids that use the skatepark or whatever it is, but it seems to carry along a lot of baggage.
Well, I think, Ron, when we had a meeting a week or so ago, there were definitely some of the neighbors around the park were, were really adamant about it not being there. All right? Because of what you're saying. Okay? And that was why we're looking at in front of the fire station, to the side of the fire station, all right? And we brought up the discussion of the piece of property that they were gonna sell for the Gale Building by the middle school, that
Field with water, whatever.
I can't even think of the name of that road. What's the name of the road by the school?
Memorial.
Memorial, right? Memorial and, and Conference, uh, yeah, yeah. Right, right there, that flat piece of land. And so, and, and again, okay, people love to, right off the bat, bring it up, and we're negative about it. No, we're not negative about it. We're trying to find that happy medium. And, and I understand what you're saying, and we heard those things the other night, but this is a pretty active group that have raised, I don't know how much money.
I don't know each other.
I don't even know how much money. But they're pretty active about trying to I don't even know how much money, but they're pretty active about trying to resurrect a skate park. It's just finding.
Well, they, they were the last time. They had a, a, a chairman and he was active, he was with the kids and they were playing hockey and they had all kinds of things going on and the skate park. I, I'm not against, you know, the kids using the skate park. The problem is, is the stuff that comes with it. Who, who polices it?
That's exactly right. And, and those were the kind of things that were talked the other night. And I think that that was one of the reasons with, um, maybe trying to find a place like Opechii. When you drive by there, it's open all four sides, right?
Right.
I, I don't even think there's a tree near it or anything, okay? So I kind of think that, that maybe the suggestion of, of by the fire station or, or on that piece of land by the school gave it more visual, all right? Because we all know, our police officers can't be sitting there policing, all right?
It was behind the police station the last time we approached.
I know, but, but it was kind of, you know, it was kind of, you know.
And be, be quite frank with the people that have asked to have this meeting with us, that's the first thing they said. Well, they can look right out and see it. We, we put it back where it was. The police department's right here. Well, it was right there before.
Right. Yep. But, but they, they, they have their duties they have to do. So I, I, I just.
Absolutely right. We, I agree with you.
Well, and that was, that was why when they recommended the land different by the fire station or the land by the school, you know, they can drive by, you know, they're, they're seen both ways, okay? The kids there and the police, you know, they, they're, it's more visual. So maybe it makes it a little bit more, um, you know, I don't know.
Well, I, I just think it, it tend, ends up being quite a headache, so.
I know.
That's my, cause I'm old, but I, you know.
I understand. And we talked about this. All right.
Okay. So I will, I, I will proceed.
Make the application.
I'll make the application, at least put it in as a placeholder and, um, let, let Amanda know that and remind her to please redress the school.
I know that, that, you know, they have someone that's a surveyor. It's, everything kind of goes in slow motion. It's, you know, whoever that person is probably busy too. So, and it was only a couple of weeks and the snow on the, well, there were, the snow on the ground, yeah.
Now there's more snow.
Um, any other?
I do not have anything.
I just have a couple of questions because I've been contacted by, um, a couple of different, um, I guess, interested, very interested people that are looking at, um, running for selectmen. Couple of things, I know that we had on the, on the budget committee, we held meetings and not everyone was there. We had to have a quorum there, but they were not present.
Right.
All right? Can that happen with the selectmen's?
So as the, as it stands currently.
Yeah.
Um, you would need, you have to have a quorum of the board present for your meetings.
All right.
Um, if there is a, um, strong reason why a member can't be present, such as fell down, broke their leg, they can't drive.
Or.
Or, um, if they're working, um, out of town, I suppose that would be a, a potentially a legitimate reason. It has to be stated in the, in the minutes. Um, you know, they have to be able, able to, you know, come in remotely, et cetera. Um, but at this time, as long as there is a quorum, quorum present.
Okay.
You can proceed with the meeting with someone coming in remotely. Um, but the, the law has not changed to allow fully remote meetings at this point.
Now, my other question that I was asked is electronic signing. So that means obviously, here we go with the geeky stuff. Um, electronic signing, being, um, being able to sign the manifest, because I know we come in, we sign the manifest, but is there going to be, is there going to be a way that they can be electronically signed by someone who is not or cannot come in to sign it? And I'm just, are these questions that I get asked, so.
So we currently have a subscription through Adobe, which is an electronic signature software program.
Yeah.
Um, if you recall during the pandemic, um, Selectman Mooney, you did, you did sign electronically.
Yeah.
The gentleman would come into the office and, and sign.
Flip phone.
Yeah.
No way.
Would sign, would sign, so that they weren't using that option. That option is available. Um, you know, obviously.
They could come at night.
They could come at night when the building is, exactly.
I did, I did.
Which I would recommend in a situation like that. And the reason I say that is this, I can easily scan, or anyone can easily see, scan, the finance office can scan you the manifest for your signature, but they can't scan you all of the documentation, the time sheets, everything that goes with that. That would be an exorbitant amount of work for, it just would not be reasonable.
Okay.
Um, but they certainly, we, we used to have, um, times when there were board members, I can remember in the past 23 years, that there would be times when, um, a board member might come in after hours and sign the manifest, review them and so forth, because they weren't able to get there during the day.
Okay. That answers my question.
I, I do have a question regarding that though.
What's that?
So if an individual is zooming. How does that work with non-public?
So you have to make certain that you've ended the meeting for anyone else who is participating and only that individual is, um, participating via Zoom. You would also want to end any recording of the meeting at that time or basically end the meeting. Well, you wouldn't be able to end the meeting if they're coming in via Zoom. You'd have to allow them to continue to participate, but you would end it completely to the public and end all recording of it. So it does put a lot of extra, not a lot, but it puts extra work on staff to make sure they remember to turn the cameras and recording and so forth off. But yeah, it can happen, so.
So do they have to declare that they're?
They do have to declare, they do. They have to declare that they are alone, that they are, um, um, in a, an area where there's no one else participating with them, um, absolutely. And, and technically for anyone zooming in as part of a committee meeting, those are the questions that they would be asking them as well. But there could be other people in the, the house or whatever, but in, in a non-public situation, they would need to be alone.
In a room by themselves.
Where there was no means of anyone else hearing what was taking place. Yep.
Okay. All right. Good. Okay. Um, no other, no other business?
I have a non-public.
You have a non-public? All right. Um, our next meeting will be, um, April 4th.
Right now, yes, you're scheduled for April 4th and you do have the public hearing for the COSIP grant that, um, that will go in the newspaper. I do have that scheduled for 10 a.m. unless there's some other reason, okay?
I mean, unless we hear from.
And again, at this point, I haven't heard anything about anyone being out there to look at the survey piece. Um, I'll let them know that I'm going to put the intent in and.
Sure.
So you're probably good till your next meeting after that.
And then the next one may be at six, at nine. Okay. We'll plan April 4th at 10:00 in the morning, um, subject to change.
That, yep.
Subject to change. All right. Uh, roll call, John?